It's not taking my.
Good evening. I'm going to call the meeting to order. It is Thursday, April 27th. This meeting is being broadcast and recorded by WCTV and audio recorded by Administrative Assistant Jamie Wickston. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
There is a flag over here that you can't see. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we proceed with the recognition ceremony, I would like to have a moment of silence, please, for Toby Alfred, who is a Wareham eighth grade student who tragically passed away this week. There will be a candlelight vigil this evening for Toby at 8:00 PM at the high school softball field, and there is also a GoFundMe page to help the Alfred family, which you can access through the Wareham Week online. So tonight, we begin our meeting by honoring Wareham School District employees for 20 and 30 years of service to the Wareham school system and, more importantly, the children of Wareham. We'll also honor several retirees. After this recognition ceremony, we will have a brief recess and then we'll reconvene for our regular meeting at 6:30 PM. So we're going to turn the festivities over to our Master of Ceremonies, Dr. DeAndrea, and who will be down at the podium, and the school committee will come down front, please, and begin this recognition ceremony.
I'd like to, I would like to just begin.
Go ahead, while they set up.
Go ahead. Is this mic on?
It is.
It is, yeah. As everybody gets set up, I'd like to just welcome everyone also and say congratulations. Longevity in a school district is something that's so important for our students as they go through the buildings and they get to know folks and teachers and staff members. And from year to year to year, seeing familiar faces and feeling comfortable as part of a school community, I think it's something that is not recognized as important as it is. So thank you to all of you who have been here for so long. So let's go.
First of all, I'm Bethany Chandler, Principal of Wareham Elementary School. I have the amazing pleasure tonight of speaking on behalf of many Wareham Elementary School staff, and we're going to begin with 20 years of service. We're going to begin with Mrs. Michelle Sampson. If you could come on up. Mrs. Sampson has served as an outstanding kindergarten teacher in our district for 20 years. She first began her career at Hammond School and then John W. DeKes, and now at Wareham Elementary School. Ms. Sampson teaches, and when I say teaches, it's bell to bell. Her students begin their working day at 8:30 AM, and they do not stop until 2:50. As a matter of fact, on many occasions, buses started rolling and Ms. Sampson's still in class, teaching her students. I said frankly, I'm surprised they're not all here right now in that back corner working. Her profound dedication to meeting the academic needs of our students is simply exemplary. So congratulations, Michelle. It's a pleasure working with you every day. Our next recipient is Mrs. Amanda Fitzgerald. If you could come on down, please. Mrs. Fitzgerald has served as a third grade teacher, first at Minnetonka Forest School and now at Wareham Elementary School. Her passion to meet the academic needs of her students is outstanding. She is organized, thoughtful, and dedicated to both her students and colleagues. As Secretary of the Plymouth County Teachers Association, Amanda serves our county to provide opportunities for our colleagues and support for their profound profession. As a teacher, Amanda works tirelessly to provide the best possible education for our students while also orchestrating amazing community connections to our grade three students. Because of her, our students engage in amazing field trips and have the opportunity to hear thoughtful community members speak about our area. Thank you for your amazing service, Amanda. And now we have Mrs. Mary Nielsen. Please take the stage. Versatile, supportive, and optimistic are three words that describe this paraprofessional. As a matter of fact, we should just remove the para because Mary always serves as a professional. Whether at door duty, working with small groups, or teaching an entire class, Mary educates our students with pride. And beyond that, if teaching by day was not enough service, Mary teaches swimming at the Cape Cod Swim Club on the evenings. Mary, thank you for your outstanding service every day to our school district. And I get to continue on. This is my favorite. I have now the honor of 30 years of service. May I have, please, Michelle LaFrancois to the stage. Here we go. Here we go. In Michelle's 30 years of teaching, she has served as a grade three teacher, a grade two teacher, a kindergarten teacher, and most recently, a grade one teacher. She has worked at East Wareham School, Hammond School, Minnetonka Forest School, John W. DeKes School, and Wareham Elementary School. What school will it be next? Just kidding, Michelle, just kidding. Michelle is a dedicated member of our school community who serves as the Vice President of the Wareham Education Association. Here, she dedicates her time to serve the members. But what this audience really should know about Michelle is her love for her students. So much love and compassion that one year, she gave a much-needed student a home. Not only was she this child's teacher, but she became a temporary mom. So this is the type of educator Michelle LaFrancois is, and that is why we are so lucky to have her. Okay. Ms. Julie Cardoso, come to the stage, please. Julie has served as a third grade teacher at Minnetonka Forest School and now at Wareham Elementary School. Julie, I don't know, us at Wareham Elementary may know, certainly the Minnetonka, loves Charlie Brown. We all have snoopies on our Christmas trees. So she loves Charlie Brown, maybe because of her likeness to the character of Lucy. So I decided to look Lucy's character traits up. And this is what it says about Lucy. Though she's often dismissed as simple and bossy and crabby, there's more to Lucy than strong opinions. She dispenses sound advice for just five cents and looks out for her brothers Linus and Rirun. She's confident, strong, and positive, and she'll make a great president or queen one day. Although I can agree that Julie is bossy or crabby, I would argue that she gives sound advice, looks out for her Wareham Elementary School brothers and sisters, most certainly is positive, and beyond all, strong. Through adversity, she still is able to be amazingly thoughtful, compassionate for the staff, and especially for her students. Thank you for your job. Well done, Julie. I know it's been a tough year, so thank you. And now, I would like to invite Mr. Scott Palladino, Principal of the Wareham High School, to the stage.
Can't believe it's 10 years. When we first recognized these three for their 20-year accomplishments, and here we are 10 years later, it seems like it was yesterday. I first want to bring up Tina Clark, a physical education teacher at the Wareham High School. Tina started off as a physical education teacher, and in her first few years, took additional courses to become certified in health. Having a person that has this kind of flexibility is awesome and allows for optimal scheduling. Tina teaches four health classes and two physical education classes. She previously coached track and volleyball and served as the Athletic Director at the high school. Tina has very strong curriculum and technology knowledge, and is often the one at the school that schedules the PE staff. She is the go-to person for educational technology and was influential in supporting our staff with various educational apps, especially during the pandemic. She was referred to by one of the teachers in FIS Ed as the mother of the PE staff. She is an advocate for her department and is always looking for ways to be innovative. She has served as an unofficial mentor to many in our school and as a formal mentor to many others. Tina Clark also runs the Wareham High School Drivers' Ed Program, which has grown by 300% under her direction. Half the town under the age of 35 has driven with her. Ms. Clark also officiates track meets, supervises breakfast and lunch at the high school. If you want to see Ms. Clark in action, stop by tomorrow afternoon. She's handing out mechanical babies that go home over the weekend. She has this organized, likely finely tuned machine. A fun fact about Tina is she is known as the Goat Whisperer, and she raises several goats in her backyard. She is also a very good badminton player and has won many student-teacher competitions at the high school. In her very spare time, she is an avid sailor and competes in many local races. Janine Alexander. Come on down, Janine. She's a paraprofessional at Wareham High School. We also know her as Genie and Big Jay. I'm still trying to figure out the Big Jay thing. She worked at Minnetonka Forest Elementary for seven years, Wareham Middle School for three years, and Wareham High School for 20 years. She was actually my first secretary. You remember that, Janine? Holy cow. That was when I was the summer school director for the elementary school many years ago. Janine goes above and beyond for the students and staff at Wareham High School. She is incredibly tuned in and supportive of the entire culture and community inside and out of the Special Education Department. Janine, you got to stay on stage, please. Janine, you got to stay. Janine is the go-to person for coordinating showers, collections, or any event to celebrate or support the staff. She is an asset to the climate, culture, and community of the school. Janine often works with new staff and brings her knowledge of the procedures and policies at WHS to these teachers as a means to support them with the schedule, the system, and the day-to-day details of the school. Having Ms. Alexander assigned to a classroom is like having another teacher in the classroom. She is very flexible and always is willing to step up. She has never ended the school year at Wareham High School with the same schedule that she started the school year off with. Anyone who knows Janine knows that she is never idle. So if she has a free moment, she is right there, ready to help out. She cares for the students like they are her own. After school is over, Janine works the door at athletic games and is involved in the after-school sale program and the summer program. She is the treasurer of the Wareham High School Athletic Booster Club. Janine has raised three children that all attended Wareham High School and are all very successful, and KT's here tonight. In her very spare time, she spends her spare time with her five grandchildren. Congratulations, Janine Alexander. You can sit down now, Janine. Deborah Anastasia, come on down, Debbie. Debbie is an English teacher at Wareham High School, predominantly for grade 10 students. She is the go-to person to get students over the MCAS hurdle. She is very empathetic and caring and creates great relationships with her students. Her classroom is very innovative, and technology is constantly being used as part of her instruction. Her lessons are well-planned and provisioned and provide clarity that is unmatched. Students love Debbie, and it's not uncommon to see her be requested to hand out dozens of diplomas at the seniors' graduation. Debbie has two books that have been published by former students that are dedicated to her. I'm pretty sure she was the editor for one of those books, although she won't admit it. Debbie has a large, Debbie, 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 I'm not done. Debbie has a large social media presence with her Twitter account, and students are always able to reach her during off-hours. She is also easily seen throughout town, as she's the only person in town who drives around with a surfboard on the roof of her car all year long. She is very empathetic and is the go-to person for a lot of our kids. It's not unusual to see kids that she doesn't have in class come to her for support in advisory or after-school. Debbie also serves as a department mentor and has an excellent track record of having her proteges be very successful as teachers at Wareham High School. She's the proud parent of Trevor, who is in college, and Patrick, who has graduated from college. I'd like to introduce our Food Service Director, Mike Russo.
Good evening. I'd like to recognize Elizabeth Souza, who is retiring after 22 years of service to Wareham Public Schools. If you'd come on down, Beth. Beth had a career as a nurse before coming to Food Services, but wanted to keep an eye on her three sons as they progressed through Wareham Public Schools. So she came to us and has primarily worked at Wareham Middle School over the years, but she's been an extremely valuable team player, and she has, throughout the years, stepped up whenever there was a gap or vacancy at any of the schools. So she's been seen and worked at all the schools throughout the district. Beth will most definitely be sorely missed. She's patient and kind, but also knows how to take charge when needed, and she quickly became the right-hand person for her cafeteria managers. I've mentioned that Beth enjoyed watching her sons go through Wareham Public Schools, and she is now looking forward to spending time with her grandchildren. I have tried everything short of threats to try to convince her to stay with us for another year or two, but I've been unsuccessful so far. So I want to wish her good luck, and Beth, as we say in the Navy, I wish you fair winds and following seas. And thank you for your service. I'd like to reintroduce Bethany Chandler to please come on up.
Finally, tonight, we are going to recognize Rosie Holmgren. Rosie began her career as a custodian on July 1st, 1996. She's been part of our family ever since. Rosie worked as a custodian over at West Wareham School. Rumor has it that when she waxed the floors over there, the entire staff went shoeless. So many stories. We could go on and on, but we won't. When Rosie worked over at DeKes School, one of her favorite yearly activities was stripping the floor. One time while stripping, she fell back right inside the bucket. But don't you worry, Billy pulled her right out. Billy and the custodians also pulled her out of a snow jam she had when we had about 100 inches of snow in the courtyard. She fell in that too, but we got Rosie right out. And the thing about Rosie is she may fall once in a while, but she always gets right back on her feet because her dedication is outstanding. Anyone who knows Rosie also knows she loves Christmas, especially dancing Santa toys. One time, she came into my office at DeKes School and said, "Bethany, you just got to check out what this Santa does." And I said, "Okay, Rosie." And after we saw the Santa, you know what I'm talking about, climb up this ladder and do his little dance. She turned around and looked at me and said, "I just can't get enough of this stuff." Well, we could never get enough of your stuff either, Rosie. Rosie has an amazing work ethic, a dynamic personality, and a very strong heart, and we are forever grateful for her service at Wareham Public Schools. And we would like to have everyone, we're going to reconvene in about 10 minutes or so, so please stand up and chat with our recipients, and congratulations to all of
Those who wish to leave may do so now. Not you, Miss Lynn. In a moment, we are going to recognize the boys' basketball team. They're out in the hallway, and they'll be coming in momentarily. On behalf of the entire school committee, I'd like to welcome the members of the Wareham Boys Basketball Team, their coaches, and their families. The team finished with an overall record of 22 and 3. They won another South Coast Conference Championship, but more importantly, we want to recognize you and congratulate you for winning the state tournament and being named Division IV State Champions. You guys were the Yukon of the state tournament. You peaked at the right time, you played smothering defense, unselfish offense, and winning each game by double digits. In fact, the Boston Herald suggested that D4 Wareham was good enough to compete in any division. You were a true team, putting team success ahead of individual glory and individual statistics. And a state championship is better than any individual statistic. That stays with you for the rest of your life. You are a credit to your school, your families, and your town. We are currently working with the selectmen to try to get some signs put up as you enter Wareham from Marion, you know, that old Rochester district, from Bourne, you know that district, and also maybe out on Room 58 by Carver, so other people can see it too, that says, "Welcome to Wareham. Congratulations to the Division IV 2023 State Champions." So the selectmen will help us get that done, so hopefully before the summer, you'll see those signs up there. And you can point them out to your friends in those other schools. First, I'd like to recognize the assistant coaches. We have a certificate for everyone and a team photo. So I'd first like to call up Jawan Gamble. I'm proud to say that Jawan played for me back in the day, and Jawan is a valuable assistant. He also heads the Wareham Community Youth Empowerment Program, which is a great program for the town and for the youth of Wareham. Thank you, Jawan. Next is Aaron Baptiste. Aaron was also a former player of mine. Aaron's also a new father, so I want to congratulate him for that as well. Thank you, Aaron. Darian Fernandez could not be here tonight, also a former player and one of the few basketball players from Wareham to get a Division I full scholarship, and he will have two championship rings on his hand pretty soon. I'd like to call up Jamie Sylvia. Jamie is too old to be one of my former players, but Jamie has been a longtime advocate for the youth of Wareham. He really cares deeply about Wareham basketball and all of Wareham. So thank you, Jamie. Now I'd like to recognize the players. I'd ask the players to do the same thing. You can come up, go back to your seat, and then we'll take a photo at the end. The following players could not be here tonight. Many of them are playing in AAU tournament, actually. That would be Aaron Cody, Jace Travers, Antoine Crossen, and Diego Mello. So let's give them a round of applause, please. And now I will go in order of your numbers. I'll call up your name, and I would like to recognize the only senior on the team, Next, we have Jace LaPointe, sophomore. We have junior AJ Lopes. Who might be the best point guard in Massachusetts, by the way. We have junior Will Halloran. Junior Jaquan Pittman. Junior Kyle Susko. Junior Jaren Pittman. I'm sorry, Jaren, I'm sorry. I knew that. Sorry, Jaren. And junior Taj Lewin-Pina. And finally, I'd like to call up head coach Stephen Faniel. And I want to see if Stephen smiles tonight. I'm hoping, there we go, there we go. Stephen also is a former player of mine and a former assistant coach. He too will have two championship rings on his hand. Coach Faniel, don't go anywhere, though, please. Just stay, you can stay right there, just so you can see me talk about you for a second. Be uncomfortable. It wasn't luck that brought Wareham to state championship. It was these talented players over there, and Coach Faniel's year-round dedication, his scouting, his game plans, his hard work, his vision, his style, his philosophy, and his players bought into that system and played so hard for you and for each other. And that's a very impressive accomplishment. Well done, and all I can say is, repeat? Thank you very much. If you could get all the players and coaches to line up in front, we'll take a photo with everybody, please. I'd also like to call up the principal to take that photo with us. Mr. Palladino, please come up. Okay, we are going to move on in our agenda. There is no student representative report tonight, as Indiana is doing the candidate night emceeing, apparently. And is there anyone in the public that wanted to speak at all for public participation tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item number four. We have minutes of the meeting to vote to accept the October 6 on October 20 minutes. Do we have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, 400.
Opposed, 4-0-0. Next up, we have Washington DC trip, and then the KSA Basketball Tournament trip.
Thank you for having me up here again. So we, before the pandemic in 2019, when the eighth graders first came into Wareham High School in the 1819 school year, we had hoped to create a tradition that was in place for many years prior to 9/11, which was the eighth grade annual Washington DC trip. We ran it in 2019, and we're ready to go in 2020 at the end of March, but unfortunately, we all know what happened in March of 2020. So we did put it on a hiatus for a little while, and I'm really proud to say that in 2023, we brought back the eighth grade Washington trip from a very short hiatus this time. And we had 70 students that went with us to Washington DC, and it was just an unbelievable experience, and full disclosure, until we hit New Jersey on the ride home, but that's a whole nother story for another day. But we were hoping to keep this going and make it a tradition again, and have some years where we just kind of continue to do this. It's a great educational opportunity for our students. It really gives them the hands-on knowledge that they've been reading about and studying about, and to actually see it in action is, it's really cool to see the students kind of have that aha moment. We studied this. Now I understand a little bit more now, and it was really cool. So we're proposing to do this again, April 7 through 10 of 2024. We've really had a great experience with the company Explorica, and the nice thing about using them is everything is done online, and there's nothing being brought into the school, and the school has really nothing to do with payments, and it's all done online through credit card. We anticipate the cost to be approximately $800. That could hopefully go down a little bit more, and depending on how things pan out, but we're looking at approximately $800. Transportation is by coach buses. We always leave and return from Wareham High School. Our chaperone ratio is 1 to 10. And the reason we want to put this in front of you today is we're hoping that if it's approved, we can get going and people can start financing this with as little as $80 a month. There are fundraising opportunities that we will set up in the fall, and the website allows for family members to help support the students with payments as well in lieu of gifts for holidays or birthdays, so it's a really awesome experience. I know you have the document. I won't bore you with all the stops, but let me just tell you, we go from about 7:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night, and it's nonstop, and it's really awesome. Students literally are in the hotel for eight hours. They're all worried about the hotel, and it's like, all you're doing is crashing, and we're going. And there is security as well, which is really nice. They hire two security guards to supervise the area that our students are in, which is great. It's great peace of mind for the chaperones to be able to get rest and not have to worry about doors becoming untaped and things of that nature. So it's a great event, and I just want to thank you for your consideration tonight.
You have any questions for Mr. Palladino? April?
Not so much a question, but just a comment about how great of a trip it is. I know my son still talks about it from his being the first reintroduction before COVID of the trip, and I think it's a great opportunity. And for those parents that are concerned with the cost, Explorica did really make it easy to be able to pace the payments, and the fundraisers were really, really helpful in helping it be affordable. So I think it's a great program, and I hope that we all vote it through.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Brendan?
I'd just like to echo those sentiments, because when I was in eighth grade, we were the first class to do the Washington trip in so many odd years, and even 30 years later, we still reminisce about the times we had on that trip. It's an amazing trip, and it's, even the fundraising, even the classes that we had to get ready for the trip are things you'll never forget. I mean, some of the best bonding experiences I had with my class were during that trip, so I fully support it, and I know, you know, for parents that are concerned, I know that they had, we did a ton of fundraisers, we did car washes, we did candy sales, we did everything, and that's part of the experience in and of itself. So don't worry, you know, we'll make it affordable as we can, and I hope we can get this going and make it a yearly tradition again.
Thank you. Joyce?
I'm happy to support it, and I was just curious, is there, other than the bus, is there anything that you would do differently that you learned?
Well, this was our second trip, so we adjusted some things. The first year, we did a haunted tour, and I didn't think it was that great, so we switched that up, and we did a bowling at a place called Stripes, which is similar to pins, and they had, they bowled for an hour, and then they were able to have a meal there. So we adjusted that. We did, one thing that we would adjust, we weren't really fond of Kadoba. It was one of our dinner experiences, so we already put in to change that, and we changed the bus company for next year. It was just, it was bad luck, so we said, you know what, let's just try a different bus company. So those are the two things from this year to next year that we were proposing to change, different bus company, and not, it wasn't their fault, but I just felt like we were kind of jinxed with that one company. Let's try someone else. And the Kadoba was, we were very fortunate that it was nice outside, and they had a lot of seating outside for us, but if we didn't have the great weather that we had, it would have been pretty tight in there. And so we adjusted. Those are the only two things we really adjusted. It's really, this company, they had seven tours during the time we were down there with this company, so you multiply that through by X number of weeks, and they have, I would estimate, probably 1,000 tours a year there that they run. So it's a huge company, and they really have it down to a science. They know exactly how much time we need in each place. I would probably add a little more time at the zoo. I think we shorted that a little bit, and that is something we're talking about adjusting as well, maybe giving us another half hour there. It was just so big, and you needed, you have to walk quite a bit, so. But I think those are the only things we change.
All right. Well, thank you to you and the other chaperones who gave up your time with your family to give the kids that experience.
Thank you.
Just one question, Scott. I know we get it every time for this, something like this, though, but if there is a student that really is struggling financially, can we, I know there's fundraising opportunities, but is there assistance?
Even Explorica has scholarship opportunities as well if we identify the student. So there's always, you know, in Wareham, where there's a will, there's a way. We have people that are willing to donate if kids need it. There's, there were kids, not this year, but the last time, that pretty much paid for the whole trip with fundraising. So if there's a kid who wants to go, there's, we'll always find a way, no matter what.
I can say Dylan paid for his entire trip with fundraising, so that was awesome.
I didn't want to mention his name.
That's fine. I own it. That's cool. I was super thrilled. I sold all the calendars, and he got to go for nothing, so it was great.
Do I have a motion to approve the Washington trip?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, 4-0-0.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next up, we have another trip, KSA Basketball Tournament trip. Thank you, Coach Faniel.
So basically, as you guys know, we're leaving the South Coast Conference, so it gives us some flexibility in our schedule. You've seen those gentlemen over there. We have a lot of kids coming back, and we're just trying to challenge them, you know, as much as we can. So we want to propose that we go for three games in Florida. This year, the Division I State champs, the only games they lost were two of the games that they went down there and played, and I think that gave them some bonding time and really hardened them for the rest of the season. So, I don't know. We have done this before, once before. We have done this, we were able to fundraise for everything, so it wouldn't be at any cost to any kid. That is our plan this time, is to fundraise for each kid to go. The trip would cost probably about, we're thinking around $2,000 for each kid, but it's going to depend on the flights. So we don't have the flight information yet, but each package is roughly between $1,500 and $1,600. So like I said, last time, we were able to fundraise for all of that, and I think, like, kids still today come and talk to me about, more about that. Now, they won conference championships and won a lot of games as well, but when they come and talk to me, they like to talk about that Florida trip. So it's a great experience for the kids. The kids really want to do it, and I'm for whatever they're for, so I won't sleep for a couple days.
When do you know the package that you're going to use? When would you know that?
So, I mean, we didn't really want to get into it with the parents as much until it got approved. I don't want to, you know, overstep, so, but there are, there are three different packages that we have, but all of them are right around the same area, and they're all in between $1,500 and $1,600 each.
Other questions from, April?
So I think it's a great opportunity, and I just want to point, it would be during Christmas break, so the students wouldn't be missing any time from school, right?
Correct. It would be December 26 to December 30.
I think it sounds like a great opportunity for the kids that are really passionate about it, and, you know, I think it's great, especially for those that want to pursue, you know, post-high school, you know, athletics, and to be able to play out of state sometimes gives you a little bit of a different vision than playing, you know, all the same teams that you've played your whole life. So I think it's a really cool opportunity for them, so I think it's great that you're putting this together.
Any other questions? So do I have a motion to approve the KSA trip next Christmas break?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, 4-0-0. Have a good trip.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have our school choice 23-24 vote.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. So every year, school committees are required to vote whether or not they're going to participate in school choice. This is, we have a school choice policy that outlines our process, something that this district has participated in, in, I don't know how many years, but I know we're definitely part of it this year, and I recommend that we continue to participate in school choice.
Do we know approximately how many students we want to say we can accept in, like, elementary school? Does it differ by school, the number that we would take in?
It differs by school, it's up to the principal, depending on the needs, the size of classrooms, of classes, to determine whether or not it is prudent to accept a student. So, you know, each situation is different.
So by policy, it says by May 1, the administration will determine that number, so maybe at our next meeting, we could hear what that number is from the principals? Would that be possible?
I can work on that, yeah. I mean, every grade level would be different, and it's not so much a number, I would say, because, it's not so much just based on numbers, but it's also based on the needs of the group. And a group may be small, but need, you know, a needy group, and adding students might not be a good idea.
Right, I understand.
So I'm certainly sure they can give you, you know, a range that they'd be looking at.
And April?
Do we have a rough idea how many students school choice into the district currently?
I don't know offhand. I can certainly find that out for you. I don't know if principals know. I can get that for you absolutely.
Okay, and I do just want to point out to those watching at home that by us accepting a school choice, it means that we accept students from other districts, not that we're accepting students to go elsewhere, because we have no say whether anyone wants to do that or not. So I know some people sometimes get confused when we opt in, so I just wanted to clarify for anyone who's watching that that just means that we are able to accept tuitions from other districts when they send their students here.
That's correct.
Joyce?
So number seven, school choice students will not be accepted or enrolled after October 15. Is that, is that carried out? Is that, so after October 15, there's no more school choice?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So do I have a motion to approve our opting into the school choice program again for the next school year?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, 4-0-0. All right, next we have the Director of Finance report.
Good evening, everyone. In your packet, you have my report for the month of March. I'll start with the March financial report. It's the same format that I've been submitting all year, so you do have the budget broken down by function and the percent expended. We're about overall 67% expended at this point. Of course, some, as we've discussed, some areas more so than others, depending, you know, we have a lot of end-of-year salaries coming up, so you'll see more expenditures out of instruction in the coming, in the coming months as we close out the fiscal year. A few things that I want to point out, you do have the line item budget as well in the chart. We're continuing to watch the budget very closely. We will have some deficits in salary lines. In fact, the budget transfer tonight that I will present is one for substitutes, so we do have some significant salary deficits that can be covered by other salaries, but more so by some of the remaining funds in the expenditure line. So that's, the budget freeze that we had in the fall is very helpful. Right now, we're looking to the end of the fiscal year. We're going to be very close, if not, depending on some of these end-of-year buybacks and payouts per contract requirements for our personnel. We could be short in the local budget, but right now, we do have funds in other lines like school choice and some of the other revolving funds that can, that can cover these deficits. So again, we'll continue to watch that closely. Does anyone have any specific questions on the budget before I move on to the budget transfers?
Well, I was just looking at a couple of lines that I think you're going to address in the transfers, but are we concerned, maybe going forward next year, about the substitute lines? It seems like the par substitutes is really taking the hit. We're like 348% over.
Right, right.
And some of the other special ed subs, too, and even regular subs seem to be a major issue.
So I think what I've, what I've found is that in the expenses for the bathroom monitors have been coming out of the substitute lines, and so fortunately, we found that out in developing the budget, so we were able to increase the amount of money in not only the general per diem subs account line, so we increased that for next year, but we also increased the paraprofessional budget lines, because for bathroom monitors, they can be considered instructional assistants, so that would be where we put their funds for next year. So we did our best to increase those lines as much as we could, so hopefully, you know, I'm not going to say we won't have some deficits next year, but I don't, I hope that they won't be to this, to this extent. So that has, you know, been taken care of, hopefully, for next fiscal year.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other questions, you can move on.
So the budget transfer that I have tonight, again, is some that require school committee approval. I broke it out into three sections that kind of made sense, that went together. The first budget transfer, the first part of the budget transfer was requested by the Student Services Office, and this is to cover the remaining anticipated contracted nursing services invoices. So in addition to our school nurses that are employees, we also contract with nursing agencies, whether the nurses ride with a student who requires it to ride the school bus every day, or if it could be, if we don't have enough nurse or sub, sometimes we'll have to call an agency to do our nursing subs. So Student Services is anticipating that they'll need an additional $14,400 to cover the anticipated invoices through June 30, and so they are looking to transfer that amount, $14,400, from their medical and therapeutic contract services line. And that line, right now, they think, and I agree, is we'll have the funds to cover it. We've encumbered everything that we, that we know of, so unless there's some other expenses that come out in the next couple of weeks, that line should be fine. And the line that we're accessing, the medical and therapeutic, that would be for costs associated if we had a contract service provider that was, say, a PT, an OT, a speech therapist, any related medical therapeutic services. So that's the first part of that transfer. The next part, the largest part, is to cover the deficits in the substitute lines, and so what I did was I took a look at some of our salaries that we anticipate having enough funds to cover, and also more than enough to transfer out into these substitute lines. And what I tried to do is take a look at these line items that have, that every week when we post the payroll, we're posting expenditures. It's very hard to predict with the subs, because we don't, we don't know. It's not like a salary that we can just say, okay, there's five more weeks at $1,000 a week, that's $5,000. So I kind of looked at, you know, the past history over the past several months, and in addition to the deficit that we're currently in, I added additional funds to hopefully cover and get us quite close to the end of the fiscal year. There'll probably be some transfers. In fact, I know there will be, just based on past experience, at the end of the year, just to balance the lines out. So this is an effort to cover the deficits that we have and to have some money to hopefully cover the next few weeks of payroll postings. And finally, the final part of the transfer is a very familiar one. So we looked at our heat the transfer is a very familiar one. Um, so we looked at our heating account at the Wareham Elementary, and there were some funds that we, um, fortunately did not have to expend, um, for, from the heating line. And so as a, um, precautionary measure, just so the funds are there, I'm just requesting to transfer it into our West Utilities as it's getting low. Um, we did encumber some funds for the remaining fiscal year for our West Utilities, for electric and water, um, and any other sewer. So this is just to make sure we have the funds there in case the bills come in a little bit higher or some unexpected invoices that we might receive. So I'm looking to transfer twenty thousand from heating into utilities. So that's, um, makes up the entire transfer that I'm looking for tonight.
Any questions? Joyce?
I don't have a question. I just want to say thank you for the analysis that you must have done to make this happen and to be able to transfer between salary accounts into salary accounts. Um, makes, makes a lot of sense, so thank you.
Thank you. No, I have to give credit to Erica, who works in the payroll office, because she has, um, great, created a great spreadsheet that helps us track those salaries and predicts it out. So, um, I have to give credit where credit is due. So it is also thanks to Erica for her efforts that way.
Well, thanks to both of you.
So do I have a motion to make the transfers as discussed?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Four zero zero.
Thank you. And finally, I have a memorandum that I put in about waivers and fees for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Um, we have three, uh, areas of fees that I wanted to discuss. The first one is preschool tuition. Um, preschool tuition is currently set at three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twelve dollars and fifty cents annually, plus a fifty-dollar registration fee, for a total of thirty-eight-sixty-two-fifty. So the tuition that we receive from students who attend the preschool, and they can attend full or part-time, goes into the preschool revolving fund. And that tuition supports a professional staff salary currently, but it also can be used for other expenses that support the preschool program, such as classroom equipment and supplies. Um, again, like I said, students may attend full or half-day. I believe there's just over thirty-four students attending, uh, pre-K this year in the, uh, in the tuition-based program. Year-to-date revenue that we've taken in, uh, is eight, eighty-two-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty, and I believe, uh, families pay on a monthly basis. So by the end of the year, we should see a little bit more that comes into that account. So at this time, for preschool, I'm not recommending any changes in the fees to the preschool tuition. Um, likewise, we have transportation and athletics. The fees for those have been waived, have, are currently waived, and I'm just recommending that we continue, um, status quo for preschool, transportation, and athletics for next school year.
Any discussion of questions? April?
I think it's amazing that we're going to continue to waive the athletic and transportation fees. I think that it has really helped a lot of kids who may not have necessarily been able to be involved, be involved. My question with transportation, um, as much as I'm in favor of waiving the fees, whereas the beginning of last year, there was sort of like a shortfall in the amount of, um, people getting information in, um, for deadlines to make sure that there was, um, you know, there was no room on buses at the beginning of the year because deadlines got missed or people moved into the town late. Is there anything in place to make sure that we don't have, um, any sort of issues regarding that this year? Or do you have a, a plan? I don't know if Dr. DeAndrea can speak to that more than you can, um, but just whereas we're waiving the fees and we may need additional busing, or whereas there was a shortfall in transportation, I'm just wondering where that's going to be made up?
So, um, yes, that's, the short answer is yes. We, we have, um, been talking with, um, I've been meeting with the principals and some of the secretaries and the transportation coordinator, um, planning on how we're going to get the message out to families, um, to make sure that if they need transportation on a bus, that they let us know by a certain date. Um, you're correct, last year, um, things got a little chaotic and some people didn't get information or, um, didn't know about things, um, when they needed to. And so, um, I'm trying to, we're trying to make sure that this year, that we get the message out clearly and we get people registered.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Joyce?
A question. Um, I too agree with April that the waiving of athletic fees, I'm sure, has increased the amount of kids who are able to participate. But how have we replaced those funds that we used to collect?
Um, that I can't specifically speak to for this year, um, but I do know, as I've, you know, mentioned at some other meetings, that there is going to be a small, some, a shortfall in the athletic, the local athletic, um, budget lines. However, going forward to next year, in next year's budget, I can tell you that when we budgeted for the coaches and, um, not, maybe not so much the officials, because that's not as, you know, um, easy or as clear to budget for, but we have included all of the coaches' salaries, so, in, in, that are listed. So anything that currently we're aware of, that's been included. So hopefully, enough funds are in the budget for, for next year.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, all that being said, and I mean, again, I would like to have as many families be able to participate in athletics and, you know, transportation as possible. Does it maybe make sense to charge a small fee if we're able to, to build like a serp, you know, to, to build a rainy day fund, even if it was twenty dollars a person to participate, you know, some small fee, just so that we can maybe build up, you know, a rainy day fund, basically, in case something happened, that we'd have some funds put aside? Or do you anticipate that, that really wouldn't offset it that much unless we made the fees so large people wouldn't participate?
It, that, that might be the case, um, but I can tell you that was, which is very helpful for transportation in that, um, the Department of Ed reimburses us for homeless transportation. And at town meeting just recently, um, we saw that we were able to put an article forward to, to get those funds. Those funds by law go to the town's general fund, and they have to be appropriated to the school committee through a town meeting article. And that, um, you know, we're very grateful that that passed. And so going forward, at least for transportation, I'm not, um, speaking of, speaking to athletics, but at least for transportation, I believe that the homeless transportation is going to be funded at one hundred percent. So that can be very, very helpful, because right now, we've budgeted funds for homeless transportation, right? Um, as, as, in as much as we can predict that. However, going forward to next year, our costs that we expended this year, when we report those to the Department of Ed, those, I believe, are going to be reimbursed at one hundred percent. So we've spent that money this year, it'll come back to us next year, and that, I hope, will become part of the, the savings that, you know, in, in any revolving funds that we have. You'd like to treat those as your rainy day savings funds and spend your, spend your budget first and then fall back on those, on those revolving funds and build it up for any future, um, you know, any future unexpected expenses. So I'm not sure if that answers the question, but I think that, that will help.
Generally, yes. I mean, what I was thinking of particularly was, and I, I don't know enough about financing and what we can use certain money for, but I was thinking that if we had a fund like this already in place where, you know, people paid twenty dollars for participation, maybe we could have paid for the boys to go on their trip, the basketball trip, or something like that. If we could build, you know, it's better to have it at no cost so that everyone couldn't participate, so there's no barrier there. But I'm also thinking that having a little bit of a fund back, you know, I mean, a small, very small charge, not prohibitive, you know, to people being able to play the sports. I wouldn't want any kid to say, "I wanted to play, but I don't have fifty bucks," or whatever. But I'm just thinking, maybe building something like that would help. I, I don't know enough, but stop the top of my head, that was my idea.
Yeah. And in terms of athletics, the, the gate receipts, the, that are taken in, the tickets, those, those go into our athletic revolving fund, and that helps with, um, some of the additional athletic expenditures. So one example of that is, um, an, a purchase order came through for fees for football for next year. We can't pay for that out of this year's budget because it's for next year. We don't have next year's budget yet. So fortunately, with that athletic revolving fund, we were able to process that so that if there is a deadline and it doesn't, you know, hurt the football team because we just can't by law make that payment quite yet, but in a revolving fund, you can do that.
That makes sense.
So we have those funds too in athletics.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
I, um, do we need a vote on?
We do not.
Um, what, did we do the vote for the budget transfer? We did.
We did.
I just wanted to make sure. All right, great. Thank you very much.
Next up, we have the Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Uh, you have a copy of my newsletter. Um, I have a few things I would like to, um, share with you. Um, April, you asked a question a few minutes ago, and alerted, a little birdie visited me, and it's fifty-four school choice students that we have that come to the district.
Thank you.
Um, Scott, Palladino and I went, um, to the South Coast Conference Academic All-Star Banquet today, uh, which was a great event. This is all the districts in the South Coast Conference. Um, the high school principal and the superintendent attend along with the top five academic students from each of the schools, each of the, um, the, the high schools. Um, and each of the student is recognized for their academic achievement. Um, it was a great event, um, outstanding students, and a good lunch, too. So, um, it was a really nice event. Um, congratulations to Indiana Troop, and I'm going to mess up her name, Freddie Gekidis? 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 That was right the first time? Uh, congratulations to them. They won, um, took home silver medal from the DECA Conference down in Orlando. So congratulations to them. Um, and also congratulations to Matt Stanton, teacher at the high school, who has been named a semifinalist for Massachusetts twenty-twenty-four Teacher of the Year. So, um...
Well deserved.
Yeah. Um, that is a, a huge honor, um, and good for him, and very proud of him. And, um, so I guess it moves on to the next, into the finals, and, um, we'll see, we'll see how it goes. But we could have Teacher of the Year. So congratulations to Matt. Town meeting was this week, Monday and Tuesday night, um, uneventful and supportive. I think that would be the way I would describe it. Um, we will be receiving three new buses, thanks to town meeting. We will be getting a new roof on this building, thanks to town meeting. Um, and we will get our McKinney Vento reimbursement, and our budget passed. So thank you to all of the, uh, town folks who attended and supported the schools. Thank you to all of you who were there. Um, and so that's good news. And finally, um, we have, I ask that you vote for the, uh, bill and payroll warrants.
Do I have a motion to accept the bill and payroll warrants? Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero zero. Thank you.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. DeAndrea. All right. Next up, we have the student travel policy discussion. This was, uh, added to our packet. Um, we talked about this at, briefly at the last meeting. And, look, Dr. DeAndrea, do you want to address this at all, or?
Um, yes. If I can find it, I will address it.
Here, I have one.
Right here.
Okay. I actually made notes.
Um.
Anyways, I did lose it. It was here, folks. I swear it was here. Um, so...
It will be reflected in your evaluation.
Uh, yeah. So this, this is, this is, um, in addition to our other student travel, this just, um, outlines that, um, for overnight travel, um, we look for school committee approval. I think it's important that school committee does know when, um, when we're taking students for an overnight trip. So I think that, that is good. It also, um, asks for approval around fundraising. Now, my recommendation would be in, in that area, that if it's a, if it's something that's a reoccurring fundraising, I don't think it has to come to the school committee every single year. But if it's something new that we're, we're doing, I, I think it would be, I think it's important that the school committee knows about that, and that would be something that would come to the school committee. So this is, um, only for your first review. Um, it's very short, take some time to read it, and we can, um, talk about it and perhaps, um, make some revisions or approve it at our next meeting, which is next week.
Okay.
So we're, we're not discussing it tonight, or we are discussing?
Well, if we have any questions, now would be the time, we can ask them right now.
Yeah, we can.
Okay. So I have one question. Um, I know that it mentioned, um, educational benefits for the trip, but given that, um, Coach Daniel came today to ask for a, a trip that would, I think, come under this purview of student travel, um, having it be for athletic purposes, I think we should have some language in there, um, to cover any sort of like out-of-state tournaments, um, should they qualify, um, on a national level, so that the word athletic is in there as well. As much as we think playing sports is, is academic, it's not technically. So I would like to make sure that there's language in that to cover that.
Okay. I can do that.
That's the only thing that I have.
Anyone else? Joyce?
Um, no, I was just want to say, I think it goes well with the policy that we approved at the last meeting. So I don't really have any questions, except you brought up fundraising. Is it true that every building has like a fundraising coordinator? Is that true at all the schools? I know it's true at the high school. Is it true? No? So then, if, if the middle school were doing a, a trip, like, say, nature's classroom, would then the fundraising have to come to the school committee in that case?
I'm sorry, what was the, what was the question?
So, like, if the middle school in the past, they've done nature's classroom, and it's an overnight trip?
Yeah.
And if there's no fundraising person at the middle school who coordinates the fundraising, like there is at the high school, because they do more fundraising, would then that automatically come to the school committee?
Because of the fundraising?
Mm-hmm.
My...
Or does the principal just approve that?
That would be for, if it's a, uh, my, my suggestion would be if it's a new fundraising, something we've never done, it would come for school committee approval. If it's something that's reoccurring every year, then it would not.
Okay. Then maybe we should put that in there somewhere. Yeah. Okay. That was it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So we will, uh, you can think about it some more, and we will vote on that, uh, hopefully to approve that policy next week.
Okay.
Okay, that brings us to the Superintendent's Evaluation. So the Superintendent's Evaluation is a very unique type of evaluation. It's the only, um, educational evaluation that is conducted publicly. Uh, it's also one of the most important, uh, parts of a school committee member's job. Individual members have submitted their evaluations to me. It was my job to create a composite evaluation, um, and that is what we will discuss tonight, possibly amend this evening, but we need to reach consensus on it. Dr. DeAndrea has had an opportunity to read this evaluation, and the evaluation, the summative evaluation is the, the fifth part of the evaluation cycle. Dr. DeAndrea did a self-assessment when he first arrived here at Wareham. He had his goal-setting and plan development. He had his plan implementation. We did a formative assessment evaluation already. So night, tonight is number five in that cycle, the summative evaluation. Uh, the Superintendent submitted five goals to the committee, one student learning goal, one professional practice goal, and three district improvement goals. And two of those goals were two-year goals. He's also rated, not just on these goals, but on four standards: instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. These standards are assessed using a variety of indicators, there's twenty-one total indicators. We agreed that there would be six focus indicators for this year's evaluation. Uh, so before reading the narrative part of the evaluation, um, I want to break down the scoring of the goals and the standards. There was a discussion at our last meeting about how are we going to arrive at consensus. I kind of suggested the idea of using a mode, the most recurring, uh, rating. Um, but just to, to put it out there, um, in terms of the, the goals, in the composite goals, that we scored the Superintendent on, the first goal was the student learning goal. That's a two-year goal to develop a school district analysis to identify areas of strength and weakness in the curriculum and instruction, foster relationships with stakeholders, and transition into the role of the Superintendent of Wareham Public Schools. Out of the five members of the committee, one rated that as, uh, significant progress, four rated that as met. So we came to a composite, composite rating of met for that goal. The next goal, professional practice... The next goal, professional practice, superintendent would be visible throughout the district through school and classroom visits, engaging with staff and students, and meeting with building-level administrators. On this goal, three members classified him as met, two as exceeded, using the mode analysis. That becomes a met goal. District improvement goal number one, collaborate with the building leaders in town EMS, police, and fire to create a comprehensive emergency management plan for the Wareham Public Schools. One member rated significant progress, two members met, and two members exceeded for that goal. Once again, that would come out to a met composite rating. District improvement goal number two, together with the Communications and Community Relations Subcommittee, redesign the Wareham Public School District website into a user-friendly, interactive source of information for families in the community. Four members indicated that the superintendent met the goal, one member indicated that he exceeded the goal. So the preponderance of evidence makes it met. And last one, a two-year goal, was to determine the core reasons for families deciding to school choice out of Wareham Public Schools and develop a plan for addressing these concerns. Two members said there was significant progress on that goal, two members said met, one said exceeded. And so the, the overall rating would be met for that. If we move next to the standards, the four standards, instructional leadership. Instructional leadership, as the name implies, involves curriculum and instruction and assessment and evaluation. And the focus indicator was a data-informed decision-making, and obviously, student learning. All five members rated the superintendent as proficient in that category. For management and operations, the environment was the focus indicator about the superintendent executing effective plans, procedures, and routines, and operational systems. Four indicated proficient, one exemplary, overall rating of proficient. For family and community engagement, the focus indicators were engagement and communication. Superintendent received proficient on the engagement indicator and exemplary on the communication indicator, but for an overall rating of proficient, as five members rated him proficient in that overall category. And lastly, the last standard, professional culture. This is commitment to high standards and communication with the overall indicators. Five members rated the superintendent proficient. So the good news is, as I compiled these results, we were all on the same page, it seemed. All very positive overall. And so the overall rating for the superintendent, and we can only give one overall rating despite our individual ratings, because it's the committee itself that does the actual evaluation, was proficient. And I would like to now read the narrative portion of the evaluation and then give members an opportunity to add their own personal insights or comments, whatever they'd like to say. So we welcomed, no, that's not it.
That needs improvement for you right there.
That's Joyce Backyakis. Dr. DeAndrea had a strong and positive first year as Wareham superintendent. From the very beginning, he made it clear that he wanted input from a wide variety of stakeholders. He is an effective communicator and listens to others carefully. He has compiled and shared much data on attendance, student achievement, and school choice. He has been very visible in the classrooms, at school and town department meetings, and at athletic and cultural events. The superintendent has created positive relationships with his administrative team, the staff, the school committee, and local departments such as fire and police, and has been transparent in his approach to the budget, curriculum and instruction, building management, and student achievement. Regarding student achievement, he has made that a priority, he has made that a priority, and has a plan to focus on literacy. He continues to hold high expectations and has pushed for measurable goals. He has created an action plan to address student achievement, discipline, special education, finance, transparency slash communication, the IB program, and public perception. He clearly understands the challenges facing the district. The school committee realizes these challenges as well and encourages the superintendent to continue to work with us to secure resources, to overcome obstacles that may exist for some of our students. We realize that the students leaving the district via school choice has been an ongoing, long-term issue, and commend the superintendent for conducting a survey of families whose students have left the district. We all expect the superintendent to lead the effort to improve the perception of the Wareham Public School system. We also look for him to oversee the improved literacy rates of our younger students and improved academic achievement of all students. Dr. DeAndrea advocated for and skillfully orchestrated the adoption of the school budget, the new middle school roof project, new boilers at the high school, and helped negotiate several collective bargaining agreements during his inaugural year as superintendent. While it was a learning year in some respects for him to get reacquainted with the Wareham district, it was also a good year. He has a clear understanding of the strengths and weaknesses of the district, and he has an ambitious plan going forward. He will need to draw on the relationships he formed, his continued insistence on high expectations, and the willingness to make tough and bold decisions based on the best interest of all students to move our district in a positive way. The school committee, which has described Dr. DeAndrea as professional, caring, communicative, and supportive, will certainly support him in this important and difficult endeavor. So I will open it up to the rest of the committee, if there's any questions about the actual narrative or if you have your own comments that you would like to share with Dr. DeAndrea and the public. Joyce?
First, I just wanted to say that I was fortunate to serve on the superintendent evaluation subcommittee with Jeff, who everyone should know, he would like nothing more than to be here tonight, but he is with his tennis team. Hopefully, he'll arrive shortly. And I think that was very helpful. I hope the superintendent would agree that it was helpful in communicating between the committee and the superintendent, expectations on both sides. And this was the first year that we had done that, and it, it worked out really, really well, I think. As far as my own, I mean, I think the chair did a very good job of creating that composite evaluation. And the only thing I would, I would add for my own evaluation is, I know we talked about different indicators, and the budget wasn't one of them, but I was sure to include that in my evaluation because I really appreciate the work that you did with Kristen Flynn. I know you were both new to the district and new to the budget, and that wasn't easy. And I really appreciated the work that you two did on that. Also, the action plan going forward with the specific measurable goals, I really, I really appreciated that, too. And, yeah, I mean, I could go on and on, but Kevin did a very good job of putting that all together. So thank you for the opportunity.
April?
I just wanted to also say that, having worked with the, the superintendent on the, the communications subcommittee for working on the prioritizing the website and how we get information out to our families, and I will admit, I was definitely one that, I think, voted exemplary on that because I think that came out fantastic. And the work that was, was done with Bonnie and Robin, and Joyce was on that committee with me as well, with the input that he had and in, in taking everyone's opinions and direction was, was really great. I know that coming into our district, given the recent history of our district, since he's been gone from the district was a challenge. And I know that the first year for a superintendent coming in is more observation, seeing how things run. And he was able to really make his presence known in the district, which I really commend him for. You could definitely not miss him at every sporting event because he even towered over the basketball team. So I do appreciate his dedication to the community, coming to two nights of town meeting when he, as, as his inaugural year. And I really look forward to what his, his, his moves will be moving forward now that he's had a year under his belt, seeing how we run and seeing where we can go from here. Everybody on this committee believes in this district, believes in the schools, the teachers, the administration, and all of the staff, or we wouldn't be doing what we do. And I know that it's not always, it's sometimes a thankless job to be the superintendent. You are the scapegoat for all things that could possibly go wrong in the district. And coming in on the heels of someone else's administration cannot be easy, so I give you a ton of credit for that. And I'm really excited for, for where the district can go from here, so I just wanted to say thank you and good job. And appreciate all of the transparency. I probably had more conversations with you this year than ever in my entire time on the school committee, so I appreciate that very much.
Thank you. Brennan?
Just had my comments. You know, I'm in my first year in doing this as well. And it was great, you know, meeting with you and, you know, kind of talking, giving you my perspective as, you know, a Wareham graduate, as a longtime Wareham person, and, you know, to welcome you to the town and to see, you know, get our visions aligned as to what we want to do. And I think you've done everything we could have possibly asked you to do this year. And I look forward to at least the next two years of my term, working with you to, to get that vision out to the town so that, you know, we're all on the same page, but let's get everybody on the same page. Let's get the whole town knowing how good of a school system Wareham has and how they should be proud to send their kids here and how their kids should be proud to attend it. And I think that that's my goal as being a member of a school committee. And I can safely say that I think that's your goal, is being a, being the superintendent. And I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
And I would just add that, yeah, I agree with Brennan on that, that we've got to kind of start tooting our own horn a little bit in what we do well, and to, to really make that an effort. I'm hoping that the Subcommittee on Communications and Public Relations can really go into overdrive with that next year and maybe highlight a successful alumni, and there's so many of them going forward. I know in the past at the high school, there used to be a whole like Viking ship memo. And if I use the ship analogy, ships don't turn easily, and they don't accelerate easily, and it takes some time. But I think we've got to steer in the right direction, and the superintendent is leading that, that ship in a sense. But the ships don't go anywhere without Dr. Schwamm, the Assistant Superintendent. They don't go anywhere without the principals. They don't go anywhere without, obviously, the teachers and the paraprofessionals and custodians and the nurses and the cafeteria workers. It is a team effort. Superintendents sometimes get blamed for when things go wrong, but they also sometimes get credit when things go right, and it's a team effort. And I know that Dr. DeAndrea would be the first to, to acknowledge that. He does have ambitious plans going forward. I, I don't expect things to magically accelerate or turn around overnight. But if we can get to the root causes of some of these issues and be transparent about them, I think we can make a positive difference. And I look forward to working with Dr. DeAndrea going forward and the rest of the committee and all the members of the Wareham team. It's a great team you have in central office, finance, we, well, the special ed, everything we need is here, and I think you're going to focus us in the right direction. So thank you, Dr. DeAndrea. I don't know if you have any questions?
I, I don't, but may I?
Sure, absolutely.
So I wa, I wanted to say thank you. Thank, I read, I read everything you guys wrote, and I, and I appreciate the feedback. It was clear that you, you put a lot of thought into, into the, the feedback you gave, and I, I do, really do appreciate that. The Subcommittee was very helpful. It was very helpful to sit with you guys and just kind of bounce things around. The, the team that we have here, we have outstanding principals, central office administrators that are, that are, they're smart and hardworking and committed, and we have a great school committee. I've, this is my eighth year as a, as a superintendent. I've worked with lots of different school committees, and this is a great school committee. And I know that we had two members that were up for reelection this year that I encouraged to, to rerun because this is a great group, it's a supportive group. And, and having that relationship with a school committee makes a tremendous difference. So I think we have pieces in place to move this district forward, and, and I'm happy to, to be part of it.
Thank you. So do I have a motion to accept the overall rating of proficient and the individual goals and standard ratings as, and narrative as read tonight?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Opposed? Four zero zero. Superintendent's evaluation was done.
It's really unfortunate that Jeff wasn't here because he would very much like to be here.
Agreed. Okay, is there any other business from the committee?
The only, I just want to say one thing.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to remind everyone that there is a town election coming up and that both Kevin and Joyce are, had put their names back on the ballot to rerun for school committee. And I think it would be great for everyone to get out and vote because they have been huge assets to this committee. They do a lot for the community, both on and off the school committee. And I just want to remind the public to get out and vote in May.
Thank you.
Thank you, April.
All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero zero. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.